Yeah, a lot of people do that. It was fun because it stops in every little.
They're really good timing. They say the average. Weight gain is like five to ten pounds on those cruises. I'm glad we didn't buy the drink package. It was pretty much alcohol free for us. But I I thought the calories from alcohol would have been equal to the food and.
Which is usually the case, I think, yeah.
Who needs ten thousand calories a day, you know?
Pack it away for the winter.
My old boss, when I my first, uh, when I worked, when I worked in California. Uh, he used to be a singer on cruise ships. That was his job before he got into HR. And so we he'd always be, he's like, oh, you know, he. He's like, I'm never going on another cruise. It's like I spent months, he'd go on, you know, go on one, come back, go just, he'd be out there for three months at a time. And uh. Just singing his heart out. So we did a lot of show tunes in the office, uh, but it was pretty. Fun. I I I still, I wanna go. My son wants to go on a cruise, so one of these days we'll. Find one to do.
Well, this isn't online because I can say one thing at right. Okay, because I won the, I won the sex.
Okay, please.
Oh, uh, Skidway is interesting.
Yeah, that's kind of where you go on the railroad.
Uh, no, we didn't. The weather, we were going to, but the weather was bad, and so I thought, why pay? So we didn't. I didn't, I hadn't paid in advance for the excursion, so I didn't do it because it was foggy. But we just walked around town, so I thought, why pay all that cup on our beach?
Right.
And then the valleys, all everything you'd see would be all foggy.
Right, it'd just be fog going in. And you can see fog here if you listen.
Yeah. Yeah, but I learned if you do those excursions, you can book them yourself independent with a cruise ship because they make a bunch of money off of it.
Good to know again.
Which which uh, saloon is, you know, in Skyway?
I think, uh, that. The red onion sounds familiar, like we made it one by it, so I don't know if average or anything. If it's fine. That's just not on my brain, but because there were several saloons, but that makes sense.
No, I mean. Let me see, coming later, I don't see her on the. Zoom.
She usually shows up on air if she's not gonna be here.
Yeah.
The downtown association commissioned a couple of. Huge. Pumpkins made out of, um, rebar. That's, that's gonna be part of the hometown Halloween.
Yeah.
So we're out the parking lot, stringing them with lights.
Wasn't just my imagination. We didn't go in.
Well, they had the. Little show there, we were there.
Yeah, we saw a lot of shows.
But, meaning order at six o'clock, thank everyone for being here. Uh, we do have on here, after your public comment, would any of you like to address the council at this time? Hearing none. Um, all right, Wes, why don't you take us away?
Good evening, everybody, um. Tonight, I'm presenting the. The proposed twenty twenty six budget for the city of Stevenson. The this document represents several months of work by staff and partners, and it reflects our shared priorities. Maintaining essential services, investing in our infrastructure, and protecting the city's long-term financial stability. The twenty twenty six budget is fully balanced. Total revenues and total expenditures are both just over fourteen million dollars. It's a conservative. Realistic plan designed to continue the progress we've made over the past few years while keeping a careful eye on fiscal responsibility. We've built this year's budget around four key priorities, financial stability. Of infrastructure resilience, community development, and. Transparency in how we use public resources. Our. Our main revenue sources, uh, remain steady, property and sales tax. Utility revenues and state and federal grants. On the spending side, the budget continues to support the city's core operations. Including public works. Utilities planning and administration. We maintain a healthy reserve above our ten percent target. Which gives us the flexibility to respond to emergencies should they arise. Twenty twenty six continues our focus on improving the city's infrastructure. Major projects include. The the completion of the Cascade Avenue upgrades. Sewer line. Replacements. Downtown streetscape improvements and. Preventing maintenance of the water plant. Much of our current debt is tied to mandated wastewater upgrades, financed through low interest state and federal loans. The debt is repaid entirely through. Utility revenues, not property taxes, that remains well within the state's allowable limits. We do not anticipate any new. Utility rate increases, the rates sure adopted in twenty twenty four continue to cover our operating and debt obligations. On the operation side, the budget maintains our existing staffing levels while investing in technology, training, and process improvements. As we look beyond twenty twenty six, we also need to consider how to sustain progress we've made. Many of our revenue streams. Particularly sales and property taxes grow slowly while costs and service expectations. Continue to rise. For Stevenson to remain financially resilient in the long term, will need to look for new or diversified revenue sources. Uh, in short, uh, this budget reflects a city that's on solid financial ground and looking ahead with intention. We're maintaining the services our residents rely on, managing our debt responsibly, and investing in the infrastructure and people that make Stevenson. A great place to live. I'd like to thank our finance director, Jane Borden. Our public works team and all city staff for their hard work and putting this together. Uh, with that, I'm happy to walk through any details or answer questions regarding the twenty twenty six, but.
So, um. Part of, you know, figuring out from the the beginning what the priorities were gonna be. Looking at past strategic plan, and then there there had been quite a bit of. Support for looking at housing, affordable housing, attainable housing. So it was really just looking at. Ways to. Allocate money. For those goals, so. Um. The the one that we had. You know, we struggled with, but. Housing. What's the best way to make a difference with housing with our budget? So without knowing. With having a limited toolbox of things that we have available for us, tools to use. Um, it was suggested that a a study, um. I'm always. Studies always mean like talk and not really do. But the other part that is, uh, we have to keep in consideration with this. Is that we are essentially starting from almost from scratch. Uh, with a lot of our, with our city department, some of our, uh, positions here in City Hall, so. Have to manage our expectations with what. Um, staff will be capable of being able to pull off. With, uh, learning the job. And being able to be effective with some of these initiatives, so this will probably be more of a rebuilding year than, um. We were hoping for or expecting, but being realistic with what, um, what our goals are. Meshed in with what we'll be able to accomplish over the next year. And does that chair go any higher? I'm looking at you, that table's up to your shoulders right now.
You're trying to hide.
We can. Wait, wait, there. There you go. No, you need the wrong chair. You got the wrong chair. You good? Okay. So, um. I'm not sure how to lead the discussion, uh. As far as how that. How the budget reflects these priorities. So that was really kind of the narrative that we wanted to spin for this is that. Uh, aside from. The. Compulsory issues that we have to, you know, um, what to tend to. Bring it forward, what the, you know, looking at the the final balances, the end balances from last year, maintaining, you know, what, uh, we're required for our. Reserves and then. Doing our best to support our. Priorities.
Is there gonna be a general discussion on?
Yeah, you wanna go over your fine charts?
Um. Well, isn't more as a reference, but sure, um, yeah, so we printed these out, uh, along with these, just to give you a better visual. Uh, so the breakdown of our revenue for twenty twenty six is pretty much holding over the same as twenty twenty five. So the majority still comes from charges for services, about fifty one percent. Taxes accounts for the next biggest amount at twenty nine percent transfers in, which is over here is. Ten percent. Um, and then the rest are rather, uh, small amounts. Um. So so by far, our our greatest revenue comes from taxes and charges for services. Um. And so we anticipate that to be the same, although I think that speaks to the longer term problem of the fact that. Charges for services and taxes. While they can grow, they go, they grow very slowly, and they don't keep up pace with the. Rising costs and expenditures that we have. Um, and so down here, you can see it, the those expenses. Uh, by far the largest, almost half the services that we provide. Twenty six percent is personnel.
Can we move this chair since it's empty?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have that, this in.
Yeah. Oh, I know, that's also pretty big and nice of the cat compared to.
Uh, so services account for almost half, but. Personnel's about a quarter, uh. Capital, nine percent, and debt at eight percent. So. Really, the majority of our expenses are still providing services to the community and paying for, uh, staff. So that's where we're going to see some of the biggest rises, especially in the cost of living adjustment, which is about three percent per year. Um, and then when it comes to supplies and services, the rising costs. Due to, due to inflation will, will of course, uh, grow from our expenses, but. Um, this is a general breakdown. It 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 reflects pretty much what the. Uh, what these look like in the previous years. Um. So I don't know if you have any. Questions about that, but. This is pretty much the same. Um. And breakdown.
I really liked, uh. I remember when we started doing this, Leona. Um, had these for us in. Having this type of visual for. The revenues and the expenses really helps you wrap your head around. What the budget is. The dynamics of the budget.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I have a couple of general questions, and we got this just last night, so.
Oh, I understand.
So there's a lot to digest here, but. Um, the the sales tax that passed. Now, those would not really be reflected in there because those are gonna be neutral. To the budget because those would offset the, how do, how do we see those in the budget? I know that they're gonna offset. The rates themselves.
Right, so so those we may not necessarily see it in the budget and the chart itself, but 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 that. Prevented us. From having to raise rates.
Okay.
Um. I'm hiring in the previous years.
And and it is one other question I have now. How did you build this? Was it from, did you look at previous years and then say, okay? We're gonna make an estimate that it's so much. Extra this year based on this, so how did that analysis work?
Yeah, so 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 we looked at the previous years and looked at at, um, at at our estimated, um, ending balance for for twenty twenty five. And and rolled that to to our starting balance of twenty twenty six, and then we threw in what what we were able to predict in terms of. Uh. Property tax increases of one percent of. A a cost of living adjustment at three percent, things like that, um, general, um. Inflation for products and services and things like that.
Just one more comment. When the mayor was talking about, uh. Uh, that is. The description he gave of the budget almost sounded for a minute like zero base budgeting, like what do you need to function? When I look at a budget and I and I don't think we're at this level, like zero base budgeting is, you, okay, you drive through Stevenson, you think, what does it take? For a small town of this many residents, sixteen hundred or whatever the residents are, this many homes, this square mileage. To function, and if you didn't know anything, what would you build City Hall to be? What functions would you do? Sewer, water, that type of thing? So. But. And when he said it was a lean year coming up in the way he described it, and I I don't. It almost sounded like that's my, it just seemed like it was an opportunity to look at it that way. What what do we really need in a budget? Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, and 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 I I think that's fair and possible to do for for some things. I think there are certain things that that. Can't be zero based because of just regular increases and and what we need to keep those as, but in terms of, uh, staff costs, especially. Due to the staff turnover, that could be something we look at through a zero baselines.
My concern is that we've had quite a bit of momentum in the previous years, and we have to be prepared to not have that same. Momentum in projects depending on. Um, things, things like that, so.
Yeah.
Um, the. The, as far as what we can, the big bites that we can take. Our momentum is, we're gonna have to build that back up again.
Yeah. Makes sense.
I hear what you're saying, Scott, about, uh, wanting to think about things that we need to take on or responsibilities that we have under strategic plan. How this next year is probably gonna be pretty much tied into just. Getting by.
It's a real traction, yeah.
Hey, I don't know if you've had a chance to, can I? Speak to Dane? This particular budget sheet, the five-year budget comparison that you have here. This is the sheet that I was kind of, I talked to Wes about at one point, just basically tells me. Very little. And I know the descriptors on that are are not even accurate. And because. I'm assuming that the top figures are probably revenues and the bottom figures are expenses. And they don't even, they're not even delineated as such. And the word appropriated is that. Supposed to be in a budgeted.
Projected.
Projected.
Budgeted, okay.
What would be really helpful? Since all of our revenue sources eventually, I think, first of all, going to the general fund. And then they're expended from that point. Would be if we had, um, a set of of. Revenues to the general fund and then expenses showing delineating these specific funds that we have where money's being allocated. You know, like to the fire fund, to the, uh, street fund and all those things, so we can see. Where that money is actually going.
To see the breakdown, okay.
Um, right. And if, and if the system, I was told that the computer system that we're using. Doesn't allow for. Much flexibility in terms of.
Right.
Delineating things.
Yeah.
Maybe even taking, uh, putting it on a spreadsheet or taking this sheet and actually lining through it and handwriting in descriptors that would be.
Yeah, um, I think we could, I mean, if it's a formatting change and something we could work on, it was just, you know. I haven't been here very long, so.
That's all right.
Yeah, and I'm happy to make it different, so it's more understandable.
And I kind of wanted to answer Pat's question regarding the, uh, the point three percent sales tax. It, uh, got buried on page. It is page eleven of this particular. Um. Okay, appendix. And it's. There's, it gives you two tables and monthly water rates and fees where it goes, uh. Twenty twenty three through twenty twenty eight, and then on the, on the third page it says. In the event that the fourth fee sales tax is a lot approved by voters in twenty twenty four, and the second page shows. A table, uh, in the event that the fourth free sales tax is approved. And so it shows the difference in the fees. From one table to the other. My question on this is because originally I thought we were going to have to, um. Oh, set up a a basic. Sewer water fund where we have the 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 point three sales tax is going to the, uh. Transportation benefit district. Yeah. And that we were gonna have to make a separate allocation, you know, from. The general fund to to the water sewer fund for that amount. It's quite a bit of money. And when you consider the the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenue that it's supposed to generate. A, uh, a two dollar difference in a, in a rate schedule. I'm having trouble wrapping my head around that, where we probably have about. Less than a thousand paying households for. For water sewer.
So do we know the update on the? The rate analysis, we're gonna have that, the original company circle back, we were. Going to have them take a deeper dive, but the other part that. They were gonna take a look at is that. We painted a broad stroke overall, so that the commercial users would see a better benefit than the residential users, and I don't know that that's ever been. Addressed as far as how to. Massage that so that. It's the commercial or the residential users that are gonna get more, because you're right, when you apply. Uh, that kind of money to a bigger chunk, a bigger bill as opposed to a smaller bill, then of course, the percentages will play out. You know, the way that they are, so. That was the part I'm not sure, that was something that Ben was working on, so I don't know.
Yeah, that that was something he was working on. I don't. Know what the status was on that, but I I can follow up on what that would be.
But I I had concerns over that and making sure that we had, we made some some notation on on consumer bills. The notation of the difference of their payments, so that at least that they knew that they've got some benefit from that, um, from that tax.
What would that benefit be?
What, this, well, right now, what it is, is the difference between these two tables.
If I'm looking at it and it's not bringing up money.
No, there was.
Yeah.
Quote forty two forty and forty one forty three.
And then you look at the sewer one. Seventy cents. So, so kind of, what kind of deal are we giving these people? With this ordinance. I mean, we're well, we're really providing the opportunity for them to save money.
And that's where we need to get that. Rest of that, that rate study, well, at least, you can look at the way that that money is applied. If it's just by percentage of the bill, then. It's skewed the wrong direction.
And and if we're, and. If we don't even know. Where we're going with this. How can we be putting out the notices to people? In regards to this ordinance to begin with.
Well, yeah, the only thing we could tell them at this point would be the difference between the two schedules that you already have delineated, but that's. But that doesn't address the larger issue.
Yeah.
Yes.
In my, can I ask a point of clarification on that? Mr. Mary's, it, uh. Is the reason we don't have the answer to that is because we don't know what percentage of the. Relief, so to speak, from that passing is gonna, is going to commercial. Versus businesses versus residents, and then, and I know the council, we discussed that in the past, among a lot of other things. So. So is it true that we don't really have that fixed? And then also. Um, going forward, is that something the council, let's say, if we think a disproportionate care. Was going to commercial rather than. Homeowners, is that something the council has control over, shifting those dollars if we choose?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because, um, as of right now, it's just one lump sum moved into the sewer fund.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, if we'd like to restrict those funds to be allocated to. Personal users for a certain percentage or what, what, whatever the breakdown might be, we can do that.
And we did have discussions as a council on that, I've forgotten what it was, but.
It did.
But that could, but that doesn't mean that that can't be revised. The discussion I remember relates to the budget is that. The bottom line was that it was, is it, it was clear from the beginning that all of those funds would go to. The rates, to the rate payers in one form or another, a hundred percent, and not towards something else.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yeah.
On the other side of this, I want. Say thank you for the work that you did and. Appreciate the fact that we have to have a balanced budget, but it's, it's gonna be real tough for us to sit down. And look at this and say, and pick it apart and decide if there are areas that we could save money to do other things at this point.
Yeah, unfortunately, at this time, it's a, it's a pretty tight budget, so any. Uh, cuts, um, would really need to be weighed strategically about what the top. Priorities are, especially in weighing, um. The personnel. Um, and and what we're looking to achieve and and what the cost of that would be, um, in terms of performing our services for the. For for the community. Um, and I think now as we had this turnover, as difficult as it has been operating. Day to day, I think this is an an opportunity to structure that in a way that 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 best fits up the budget and. Um. And. Providing those services.
Just out of curiosity, why is the revenues going down in twenty six?
Because we, we finished the area. So the actual shows up through the end of September evening, and then, uh, budgeted is what shows through the end of the year.
No, I don't think that was his question.
The revenues. I'm talking about the revenues, which is the line that's going up and down. Well, why it's showing total revenue has dropped in quite a bit in twenty twenty six versus twenty twenty five.
The projected revenue.
Yeah.
And and I like the whole, why? Yeah, that is so result of, um. Lower sales tax for, um.
And then we didn't have some.
Oh, right, so there were some grant funds that came in in. Twenty twenty five for certain projects that, you know, once they come in and it raises our total revenue. For that year that, but we we won't have those coming into twenty twenty six. I mean, it, especially for the wastewater treatment plant and and all of the. Grant we've got for that significantly increases our.
Well, it would seem to me like you should have a separate line item there in that revenue line. That shows what the grants are versus what the other revenues are. Specifically, because, because if you start backing that staff out, then, okay, so what we're dealing with then, really, in reality, in twenty twenty. Twenty twenty five is not true. To picture of. Twenty twenty-five is not true to picture of operational um revenues. If you throw the grants into it on this one, but you don't throw grants into it on twenty twenty-six, you see what I'm saying?
They're in twenty twenty-six if they're.
Last grant.
If they're already, if they're already.
Right.
But still, like, is a valid point in that it. The grants are one-time things that come and go, so they can give a skewed.
There were some large grants in twenty twenty-four for the sewer, yeah.
Right, I I mean, if it's helpful, we we can add that as a separate item to show it's separate from revenue as grants or at least one part of that, it that helps. But they're still considered revenue in 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 the budget.
So I think that what I'd like you guys to focus on, all of you collectively to focus on tonight, is if this is. Um, a new big task for two new staff members. We're asking all of you to to really wrap your head around the budget, so if the tools that have been provided aren't. If you would like to see something different, these are the suggestions that we'd like to hear. So that staff can then apply their time and not be, how come you didn't, but how, this would be helpful to me, yes.
Yeah, and I took that to be what he was um saying. Uh, what Dave was saying is, hey, this would be helpful to me, that I thought that was his, I think that's both of your points, actually. Uh, because what that would do. One of the things, if you've had. On Excel. She'd see those lines going up and down, probably grants, or would grants be the major thing that would drive those up and down every year?
Yeah.
But in a sporadic ways, so then it's. Um, to have a spreadsheet to where you could then pull the grants out, and then you're gonna get a uniform or uniform trend. There would be inflation and stuff, and then you could start looking at each. I remember once looking at a spreadsheet that somebody shared with me for a uh. A county budget, and that spreadsheet, and I realize these are printed paper. But that spreadsheet, that Excel spreadsheet has been many years since I, or several years since I've been in charge that I've worked with them, but you could pull out. Stuff, you could, in other words, you could compare just your utility costs or just your wages with the spreadsheet online, you could see what it was doing. Um, whereas it's hard to have that interaction with uh paper, uh but not, maybe that might be. Too difficult to do, I don't know, to develop that kind of spreadsheet where you could play with it and then see where you could dive into it a little more and get the details. Without sitting here, and it sounds like we're harassing you for the information, but yeah. In terms of the budget, one of the things that I'm interested in looking at is. Like our projected labor costs, we know labor is gonna be a big change, right? Uh, well, what, and I know it's probably in here when. But what are labor costs expected next year, and are there things we can be doing next year differently than we've done in the past? That might save on that labor cost, for example, we know that overtime costs went up when we went to Monday through Thursday for a lot of the staff. The overtime costs went up quite a bit for the people in the field. Is there a way to play with overtime to get those costs down, and how would that impact things? Uh, the other thing is, is do we have opportunities now to contract with the county in terms of for planning and such? And one major advantage we have is we don't have. Because of the employee turnover, there's always a positive, because then you don't have to worry about the well-being of that employee, cuz they're not there anymore, they chose to leave. So then you're not hurting anybody by doing something differently in the future, so are there opportunities to work with the county to where we can get our planning services for less? Um, things like that, one of the things, and these is related to the budget, we know that the. The things that is in the purview of the mayor and the administrative staff to develop positions. Like for planning and stuff like that, and we're the council, we're told that, well, that's we're that's administrative, that's not your purview, but the budget is the council's purview. So is there ways we can? Lower our administrative costs by partnering with other agencies is what I'm trying to say. Because, oh, and my point was, and I'm sorry I'm so wordy, was we're a pretty small town. I mean, we don't, so do we really need like a full-time city planner? Do we really need a full-time permit person? Because how many permits are we gonna, I'm just, I'm not saying I know the answer, I'm just asking the question.
Right, well, yes, so I mean, we could save administrative costs by not having a full-time planner, but I think there's a a difference in in looking at the value of that planner of of just. Number of permits per year versus the actual services that they provide, and one thing that uh. A planning commission said to me, cuz I sat down with them, and and they reiterated that the planner does a lot more than just, you know. Um, I'm issuing permits, and there there are a lot of things specific to the city, our shoreline um code, our. You know, CIPA, uh and and a lot of state mandates that that require someone dedicated to that and to understand the community, and. You know, we, it is a possibility to look at that, to go to the county, but then. We would still be paying more to them, and then we don't have direct control over the planner and and the work that they're doing. Um, so I, so yes, it is possible, but it's, it it needs to be have in the broader context of what that role would. Uh, provide to the staff.
Why would you not have direct control over that planner?
Well, I mean, if if we are.
If we have a contract with them.
Right.
We have, we have deliverables that are required, why would you not have control over them?
Well, it it's a lot different to have someone who's a full-time staff member of the city versus a contract, I mean, you you can have oversight, but but it's not as direct. As um as 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 having an employee here in the office.
Um, the larger, that probably would be turning all of the, all of our planning and future development of our city all into the county.
Right, which which then uh the and and there's also bigger questions to that in that the county's code is different from ours and that there can be. Different interests.
Yeah. One of the things we we've talked about many times, and we probably need to look at two in terms of capital improvements for the city. Things that, projects that we want to do, is that we need to be looking for independent uh grant writing firms. That that know the community, know the county, know the area, that are able to to write grants for us on our path. Ninety percent of something is better than zero percent of. Yeah. You know, I say, if 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 we're paying somebody a commission to write a grant for us, it's it's an appropriate cost. Because it it saves us on our capital expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and and that's something we can certainly look into if we um in in lining up our C I P. Uh, with with grants and and if we can find some that directly line up and then we can go for. That would save us on staff time writing, which is currently what happened, so that's something we could look at. I know uh this year will be a bit different because in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four and 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 beyond it, or around that time. We were doing a lot of work on the wastewater plant. Cascade and and different projects like that, so so we had a lot of grants to go out for, now we've sort of uh slowed down a bit this year in terms of. Major investments, but that's something we could certainly look at.
If we could step step ahead on one issue that's gonna come up before council on Thursday night. Uh, regarding the additional expense for the cascade improvement.
Yes.
Um. Well, I, okay, I don't know if that's talking budget or not, but talk talking about uh uh that service on that. Should we save that for Thursday?
Well, cuz that that specific topic isn't on the agenda.
Okay, right.
And it is on the other one, so we're we're walking a fine line between budget talk and that topic.
Okay.
I think one of the things that I'd like to see is, I think, this is great information. Um, and the charts and everything are 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 great for a um. What I'm gonna call a hundred thousand foot view. Well, but this doesn't get me the information that I need to be able to sign off on a budget. But I need, I need to know information of, for example, with public works. Okay, what vehicles are they replacing, what 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 are their costs that that they're talking about needing? To present to you, what are the, what are the um? Personnel costs, how much overtime are they talking about? If we're talking about, we've talked about um sewer lines. Um, what sewer line projects are you talking about? What are those, what are those costs? All of those details I need to know about. Because quite frankly, there's five of us in here that sign off on the budget. They're personally responsible for the budget. And if I'm gonna hang my property and everything else out on this budget. I wanna know what it is, I don't want a hundred thousand foot view. I wanna know the details of how you came up with individual costs or individual departments.
This is.
And I mean, that's critical for me.
In line with the suggestion of having separate line items, you know, for not only all the revenue sources, but as they're being allocated, the expenses that come out of the general fund, they go to the various funds.
Mm-hmm.
And then broken down from the various funds, how those funding, how those expenditures are are delineated. So you get a complete breakdown of where all the money's going.
Sure, yeah, and I I I can certainly provide that to you, I in in crafting this, I was listening to. Um, people about years past that and how the the budget document before was. Very dense and granular, which I think is fine for getting those questions, but I wanted at least to start off to get a broader overview, but but yes, we've, um, I I can certainly get those.
Uh, yeah, this is just, they can show anything.
Right, right.
That's the advantage of. The programs that I've seen that I like, like, say, you could click on a. The blue section of the proposed budget, and then it would give the breakdown, you think, okay, so much of that is going to this department. And then you could click on that, and you could think, okay, that's how they're spending this money, okay, then you click on that, go, so you would get, rather than. The document itself or the spreadsheet itself gives you all the detail down to the. Pennies that we made it up, it's like when I was selling fruit, I'd add my total revenue for the day, but then I could go down, how much was cherries, how much was apples, how much was this? I could get real granular, and it was just at my fingertips, so I don't know if that's.
A lot of it has to do with the software program.
Yeah, so.
The uh the software that we're using.
We don't have the ability to do that right now.
Yeah, but that's that's.
Just with um the staffing the way it is, there's literally two of us and less.
Yeah.
Yeah, so trying to keep it functional and then get this stuff.
Yeah.
There has to be realistic medium.
But they've been beating this thing around for, I I I.
Yeah.
I've made this comment many times when Leanna was here and.
Well, yeah, I mean, and and in that document in particular, I I tried not to use that too much, cuz I I saw there it was used quite a bit in previous ones, and it's.
No, this is a reflection, it's just, it's just a matter of whether. Talking about budgeting, whether we have a little bit of extra money to look at maybe uh buying a better program to.
Software of some kind, yeah, and and I think that's cer- cer- certainly something we we can look into for the future, I don't know that, you know, given the time constraints right now with budget season. I don't know that we have the capacity.
Yeah.
Um, but certainly, you know, moving forward, it 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 that would be helpful for councilwide, I think we could definitely do that.
Yeah, I I think for a couple of, couple of classes. You know, just, I. I look at the equipment that you have here, the chart.
Mm-hmm.
But it it shows that we are above twenty twenty-five supposedly. But there's no explanation. There's no explanation as to why we are putting in, why we're more equipped.
Okay.
You look over to tourism one. Total revenue is four hundred eighty-seven, one ninety.
Mm-hmm.
Your expenditures are six hundred and nine, seven seventy-three, where does that figure come from? Those, that that doesn't make sense to me, because I'm on, I'm on the tax committee. And we were given a figure of how much money we bring in. And that's how much money goes out. We don't go out more than that, I, where did that figure come from? So those are, those are the things that I started looking at on a hundred thousand foot level, and I go, oh, wait a minute, this doesn't make sense. And then, then I look at the city debt.
Mm-hmm.
And and goes out to twenty, what, twenty fifty-six or something like that?
Yes.
But what happens when? Part of that that is cut off with with moving money around, for example, with the with the the old five or the old three money. That money coming into the sewer. Um. Where where does that money shift to pay off some of that city debt?
Well, that's what in, oh.
That would change, that would change the timeline of of the payoff.
Red- reducing. If you reduce the monthly fees, the timeline can be the same. It's done for, at least. Well, again, my, again, my question is.
Again, my question is the whole rate.
Yeah.
Scheduled to begin with.
Right, which, which we'll, we'll have to give more details on for that. And and when it comes to um questions about. Public Works and and Equipment Service Fund and all those things like that, Cody unfortunately is out this week on vacation, but he will be back, and so and so he can um. But explain that to you, so we can get that information for you, I mean, yeah, you know. Whatever specific questions you have, we'll definitely find that out for you.
When the thought comes to mind, it's a, is it a thought, it's not really a question, but. You know, you talked about these different things like what the city planner has to do in these statewide mandates and stuff. Um, and a lot of times those can be made really, really complicated. And sometimes, or they can be real simple, like. So really, this gets down to, I think, what some of the questions are being asked here is what. Do the details of what really is true, support. The bigger picture. For example, I mean, I don't know that what the requirements of the state are on all those programs, how arduous are they? All I I've seen them explained in a very convoluted way in the past, but I don't know that, but I've also heard that, well, there. Aren't a lot of, there isn't any boogeyman out there that's gonna come to City Stevenson and say, you're not doing, you're violating this law or this law, the sewer system is different. But according to these federal, all these federal regulations, I don't know how complex they really are, I don't know if I can make a judgment. That we, for example, should budget for a full-time city planner, because I don't understand those programs. And have a lot of faith that they are very time-consuming. How how do we know? So I think the problem we're having with the system we have here is it sounds like we're bugging you for the details. Because we can't, there isn't a program setup where one can dive into it, more like I was suggesting with the spreadsheet. So then we come to these meetings and we pepper you with questions, and it sounds like we're beating up on you. When really we're just wanting to get down from the big picture to the pennies and be able to analyze the full breadth of it.
Sure.
Including what the requirements really are for the staff. At the state, city, and county levels, does that make sense? So how can we get that information without feeling like? We're beating up on the staff all the time, you know what I mean?
Right, well, uh.
As these questions pop into our head.
Hmm. Questions like that are are fine, and and I I actually welcome them, because, you know, the the only way we we can present this properly is is to have those questions and to give you the details for it. Um, in in terms of the city planner and 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 the complication of the. Uh, the mandates, you know, I I don't know how to specifically judge if it's too difficult or not. But they are uh state mandated or federally mandated, and we do have to uh abide by them, and so I. You know, it's something that 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 either way, we do, um, we we do need need to address, so. Whether it's a city planner or an 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 outside consultant, it'll have to be addressed in one way or another. And um and and our current staff don't have the capabilities to um to interpret those codes.
Right, yeah.
But maybe the only other thing that we need to keep, kind of keep in mind, too, is it's October. We need to have a finalized budget in place before December, right? Because we got one more, one more month's presentation.
Yes, oh, yeah, so we uh will have another presentation in November, and we can have another in December. Uh, but but ideally, we we would like uh to have it passed at 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 the December council meeting, because this needs to be finalized by December thirty-first.
Okay.
And if it makes sense to have more of these, so that we can hash it out, that, cuz you're right, we are up against it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And I think we all realize the the realities that you're facing, you know, with with the staffing and.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, so.
The, so my concern about handing over the planning to the county is how they're gonna allocate their time to deal with a growing city. I have concerns about that part of it. I have concerns about that part of it. Um the. We're, you know, asking them to help out with inspect building inspections is one thing that's, you know, hiring another FTE. But having someone with planning skills to look look out for our best interest, I I have concerns about that.
So I haven't said a ton cuz I I again, you know, this is a pretty high level and we did look at that. One of the things that we got last uh in previous years. And I know you were trying to keep this kind of at the high level rather than the the detail for this first meeting. But I do know that we can't get line by line inside those funds. Those kind that kind of detailed information, it ends up being a hundred and fifty page packet. Oh, just numbers and it can be daunting, but I think all of us. Over the next, you know, couple weeks or however long till we have the next one of these meetings. Um if we can get something like that early enough. I know we can do those kind of things and that's what we all are are uh I I give maybe not all. I'm thinking for me, what I do like to see is is being able to break down those, okay, we see the, you know, this this fund. What's inside that fund? We know that it's a. Yeah, we know it's two hundred thousand dollars. Cool. But what's that two hundred thousand dollars mean? Or, you know, they're asking about, you know, specific. You know, the 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 so those line items, when you break it down a little more, I know we we didn't do that here and I understand why it wasn't done here. So that we can see just the overall health and the size, but that's something that that we wouldn't need. Any uh anything new, we just it's it's a different way of presenting the the those things. Um for me, again, I'm only speak, I can only speak for one person. But that would help me, um even if I had, you know, give it to us a few weeks before we meet again so that I can go through. And if I have questions, I can shoot them off to whoever they apply to. You know, I ask Cody a question or I can, you know, and um. And then we can come back together and and look at at some of those things, the additional questions that we have. That it it helps it helps me, even though this. I I appreciate the work that went into this cuz I know those small things had to be combined to get this. Like I I know that it happened, the work happened. I'm not saying it didn't. I just like to see. What that is and how we got to this because this is super helpful for the the big, okay. What are we looking at? But we really wanted to be able to. Uh cuz Dave, right, we we do, we sign up on this saying, yeah, we think this is a good idea. This is this makes sense for the city for next for next year. And that's a big deal. Like, you know, that's, I know that we're not the ones making it, creating the budget, but that's a that is a big deal for us to say, yeah. Check my name by that and then the next year, you know, for that whole year. So um. I'm not, you know, I I if if we can get that. Before, not not before, I mean, we meet again Thursday and not before. That that's not gonna be, but before the next one of these and you can get in a. Far enough out that we have time cuz I work full time. And uh and so I'm not able to spend my day going through it. It's something I would have to do at night and and it just, you know, as I can do it. So I. Giving giving more time rather than less is helpful for me. And I know it's it's been mentioned before that it's helpful for. Other council members as well. So again, I I I appreciate what you did and I know you had to do those things to get here. Um but giving me those kind of details will be beneficial to me being able to answer some of those questions for myself. So I don't have to come here and go, okay, Cody. What are the six rigs we're looking at that need to be whatever cuz those are already in. We see those things. And so anyway. Yeah, that's my that's my two cents on this.
So as a group, as your questions arise, funnel them through Wes. He will get the answers and then make sure that the response goes, even if you didn't originally ask the question.
Right, that's super helpful.
So then everybody is asking the same question?
So at least when you ask a question, if I had the same question and I didn't ask it yet, then I'll get the answer before I even have to bring it up. So that's helpful.
You know, one of the thing, for example, a couple of things I'm looking at here, the general uh fire fund. Two million five hundred eighty eight thousand three hundred and fifty six dollars. How did we get there? What what? Categories does all of that money go into? You look down for the um capital improvement fund. We're at three hundred and twenty six thousand. What how did what does that involve? What projects are we talking about? What are the things that are addressed within that? So that we can say, well, maybe we don't have three hundred and twenty six thousand. Maybe we only got two hundred and fifty thousand. So which ones of these line items within that particular fund? Are we going are we going to say you need to cut out or we're just gonna give you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less? And you figure out with Cody which projects you want to cut back on. But in order for us to be able to make that determination, we have to know what was what we're working on.
Oh, oh, sure.
And so and that's that's why I need that detail so that I can make make those suggestions.
So last year, we we.
And we did the same thing last.
Well, we'll discuss that. If there was no grant, if there was no way to pay for a project, the project wasn't on here as an expense with no matching. Uh revenue. But also with the understanding that we need to be prepared to be nimble. Hey. Here's an opportunity and we really like, it's been addressed as an on deck. Project, we've addressed the revenue. We would like um a chance to present a budget amendment. So. Yes, we'll work with what we wi- within our means, but be prepared to be ready to react when.
So anyway, again, I wasn't trying to come down. I like I appreciate this. Uh and all the work that went into this, but at the same time, before we we have our next, like, we can add into this, we can get the granular.
Do a report just from the system. Just know it's not gonna be very pretty.
That's what I'm saying. I know we we that we've we've had, I believe, this system last year at this at this point. So we've seen, I know it's not pretty. It's a lot. Of just data that goes into the line by line underneath each thing and it gives the subcategories, but we, but yeah, that's what. And it's initially uh is is also because we don't have. Yeah, this was great. Again, this was helpful for me especially cuz I got here and then just kind of flip through. But um the next, yeah.
We can definitely get that to you very soon. I think we just need to finish up a a few things in terms of the findings, but we can get that to you very soon. So. The the I I'll give you all time to go over it, to write down any questions you have, and we can answer them before that and and before the next meeting. So we can certainly do that. Yeah.
So if we shoot a question to you, then you're gonna shoot the answer out to all of us.
And and what I heard is that the preference was is uh we that the question should go through you. Yeah, and then you'll farm it out to Cody or whoever.
Whoever needs to be able to find the answer.
Which bone in, which one out?
And then can I ask you a question? Now, I know that we recently were had had the normal audit uh that we had. I don't know when those findings are gonna come and and they may not have any impact on what we're talking about here, but I'm curious if they do, or we could know about that. In other words, recommendations based on previous.
Sure, yeah, uh we 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 should have the 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 final results of it fairly soon within the next few weeks, I I think. I mean, we're supposed to have it before now, but given that everything has slowed down staff wise, um it it got delayed a bit, but we should have those soon. I I don't um but so far, um a- after talking with the auditor's office, I don't. Anticipate anything that that should have any bearing on this, but but yes, as soon as we get those results, I'll I'll send them out to council.
And one of the things that in talking to the auditors, I realized now I know they charge a lot for the audit function they had. But one thing they provide for free is performance audits. And and they have a host of performance audits. It now it won't do us any good right now in formulating the budget. But I think in terms of transparency to citizens, like we're doing everything possible to cut costs. It'd be great if we could take advantage of any free, well, the the state pays for it, but it doesn't cost the city of Stevenson any money. Any performance audit we could get. Because one of the things that if I were a business and somebody said, I'll come and evaluate your business for free and tell you how you can do better, that's a gold mine. And the way I look at audits isn't a gotcha tool, uh it's. The more problems they find, the better because we we already know what you're doing right. Fixing what you're not doing right is where the gravy is or where the revenue or the that, I mean, that's. Where you can do better for your citizens. So to me, I'm always happy when they have a lot of recommendations because you think, okay, good. We could got some stuff we can sink our teeth into. So I don't look at it as a negative like some people do.
Right, no, I I yeah, I I completely agree. And and that's one thing I've been looking at and 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 trying despite the turnover is looking on the bright side of it. Is the fact that with Jane starting and with the staff turnover, if if we need to implement new. Processes or checks or SOPs, we can do that pretty easily because we're we're not, you know. Yeah, yeah. So so yes, I I completely agree. And and that's something I'm 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 planning to do once we get all the findings for the. I shouldn't say findings, the results.
All right, I would like to take a moment to um pin down the next the date for the next meeting. So October is really. Has more five. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there's five. So it's a weird week the way. We have two more weeks before we get to the end of the right. So uh by the time we get to the first week, like the third through the seventh, that should give uh staff plenty of time. It would be several weeks to be.
I'm good for any days except Fridays.
I prefer not Fridays as well.
I only can meet on Fridays.
We could probably work in a holiday weekend if you like.
If we could work a holiday weekend, that'd be awesome.
So we're looking at the first weekend of November is what what I heard you say.
So again, I know, I I mean, any really um. Pretty much most of the days of the week are okay for me. Thursdays, I are I've already kind of like. I have the childcare, I have everything set up for me for Thursdays because I've built it in for city council. Uh and so. Uh I'm not saying we need to meet on Thursday that for uh that week, wha- whatever that would be the sixth. I'm not saying we need to meet on the sixth, but if that works for everybody, it's easier for me, but it doesn't have to be that day. I'm flexible. I can work it out.
Um so just in looking here, I see that Cody is all that week. Yeah, and and also the fourth is election day.
Oh, yeah.
Is it possible to look at the week of the twenty seventh?
Oh, so you'd like maybe um maybe doing it on Thursday, which would be uh it would be the thirtieth, right?
Day before Halloween.
Yeah, I mean, Halloween at least, right? It works on it works on my, actually, let me just make sure I say it works on my end.
What the what what the twenty eighth for?
Twenty eighth is Tuesday? Twenty eighth would work for me unless I let me check my work out real fast. So I'm looking at my personal one.
It works. I can do that.
Send out a calendar and note for uh October twenty eighth at six o'clock, six to eight.
Once again, it'll be a day that I'm in the I'm actually not at home in the office, but that's fine. I'll get in time. That works.
Okay, I will send an input to that.
Oh, so I wanted to share something with all of you. It's called the the chip program. It's through the um Commerce Department, so Washington State Commerce, if you look up the chips program. It's something that's right up our alley. It is. Based on, they will. Their thing is to provide infrastructure for low-cost housing or at least a low-cost housing component. So the the requirements are twenty five percent of your project has to be low-cost or low low-cost housing. But they'll take care of, they have multiple multiple ways to take care of the utility, the sewer, the water. So if the. Developer, cuz it has to be in partnership with a developer. If they pay, if we waive the SDC charges, they pay us. So that's their whole program is to facilitate the infrastructure and that is the hardest part. So um I've seen lots of really great, if you can go to their website and check it out, but that's one way that we can.
So we would be waiting for the developer, but getting paid.
So we haven't given anything away.
We're not really waiving it. We're just getting it from a different source.
So there's and they have, that's just one component of the the infrastructure. So. I was kind of hinting at that earlier, not really sure what tools we have available to us for housing, but as we sort of see these. Opportunities, okay, what is it gonna make? What do we need to do to posture ourselves to take advantage of it? And we have someone that might be interested in putting a project together and say, oh, that's the missing component. Cuz we've checked all the boxes, but it has to be in partnership with a developer. We can't do it on our own. So that's just one. So it's. Washington State Chips Program and it's a really exciting opportunity for us to move forward. Not only infrastructure growth, but provide a affordable housing component. Although normally these. Yeah, of course, it's nothing. I'm just gonna be able to pop out. So maybe I'll I'll send this link to Wes and he can send it out to you. So um the program just ended in September, but that gives us a full year to posture for. All right, anything else?
No, not for me.
All right, looks like six.